Good evening.
Ooh, that's loud.
How about here? If I sit here, can you hear this? Everybody in the room who came today, thank you so much for coming on this beautiful fall day. Still fall, is it? Nope. Can we have it equalized? I think it's winter. Okay. Sorry. What happens if you start from beginning? It's 6:06, so we're gonna call up the order. Oh, hi, Jessica Diles.
Oh, Rick Edgar, John Oliver.
Hannah Carter.
Vicki Romanoff.
This is also a good opportunity for everyone to make sure they're comfortable with where their mic is placed, because they are all live. Did you have Tom Enge? Excellent. Okay, also with us is Steph Bailey Altonet, Deputy Clerk Morgan Wright, Clerk Candy Moore, Village Council Guy Crowe, Tom Meyer, zoning officer and codes enforcer, and two representatives from MRB, also the applicant and council representation, and various encouraging members of the public. Thank you. So the first order of business is the approval of minutes starting with August 29. And actually, before I say that, I should maybe mention that if anyone hasn't already found a copy of a potential draft resolution that we will be discussing, that was posted on the website, there are copies of that up on the table. If you'd like to get one. So, okay, so the August minutes, did folks have a chance to review these?
There's a misspelling, Guy Crowe's name.
Also Vicki has left out a document. Is member present?
But I was also made a Tanya, which I love. Romano. I'll take that over Russian anything.
Okay, great. So as if you just have noted that, excellent. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, so then we can... Anything else other than the content of the minutes? Anyone wanted, so that we could approve with those silent corrections and the addition of Vicki added, to give the officials present Guy Crowe's name change? Do you all want to see those in front of us next meeting? Or can we motion to approve with changes? Who would like to motion? Victoria, motion. Do we have a second for approving the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who needs a second?
Oh, the second was Rick. Great. The pain moving on to the minutes of September 27th, where we noted Guy's name change, the addition of Victoria Romanoff. Yeah. So we have a motion to call up approving minutes?
No.
Second? Hannah, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Excellent. Minutes of September 27 approved. Okay, and then before we step into executive session, which was posted on the website that it would be several hours, I don't anticipate that, though, one never knows. You are all welcome to stay here comfortably in the Village Fire Hall, which graciously opened up to us yet again. And so what's before us this evening? For those of you that weren't here last time, where we recap what the process is, that we've come to this stage where a preliminary determination needs to be made. And there's ways that that can go, and that's following a timeline. So the official preliminary plat was submitted. There was a timeframe with which the board has to make a determination either against, for, for conditions, or the options available to us. And graciously, actually, the timeline was extended by the applicant, so that we could have this meeting tonight and not rush, so that we all had time to look at these materials. So what we will do next is go into executive session with council, because as you may have seen, again, posted on the table there and has been on the website, if there were conditions, these are things that we've discussed with the board, based on comments that we've heard from the public, things that we've been thinking about. But we haven't had a chance to all be together in a room with Guy since that last meeting of executive council, so we wanted to give everyone a chance here on our board to ask any remaining legal questions, as is our privilege and our responsibility, frankly. So then when we're done with that, we'll move into the fourth agenda item, which is to discuss the actual application and what the board is thinking, and come to a preliminary determination. Okay, so with that, we're gonna exit, and everyone be kind. Thank you. Oh, I got a motion to do that. Thank you. So that's why we have you. Can we have a motion to... Motion to move into executive session? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Close executive session? Second? All in favor of closing executive session? Aye. Opposed? Great. Okay, so then moving on, the business at hand is to discuss the contemporary project for preliminary plat application that has been submitted. For those of you that joined after we left the room and don't already know, that there is a copy of the draft resolution on the table there, it's the same copy that was posted on the website. We had sense, and in front of us, though, did not print for everyone in the public, a copy of that draft with line items and page numbers, such that we can discuss more clearly and refer without whipping through and staring at crazy paragraphs. We also have prepared by our village attorney, a preliminary discussion outline. Does the applicant have a copy of that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Based on comments and feedback, so that in some cases, when a resolution is small, it is read into the record. When a resolution is 23 pages, it is often not read into the record. So we will not be doing that now. We will be going through any point that any member on the board has a problem with, or not a problem, concerned with, and wants to discuss. We will discuss any of those points. Points that aren't addressed, that the applicant wants to address, we will address those. Other than that, you will see that we will skip over some of them. Whereas the Village of Truensburg Planning Board, here and after the Planning Board, we're not gonna read all of that, okay? Any questions from my friends? Okay, so then moving forward, the first topic of discussion is on page 12. And I believe the page numbers are relatively the same for what you and audience might be looking at. But close, so you'll see. Page 12, it's condition number four, line 18. And I will read that. "The final plat shall specifically denote and mark lot 7 and lot 12 green spaces and open areas as available to and open to general public use, and such areas shall be suitably graded and kept relatively level as to promote such use and future recreation." The applicant would like to change that language and suggest the following. "The final plat shall specifically denote and mark lot 7 and lot 12 green spaces and open areas, and such areas shall be suitably graded and kept relatively level as to promote use and future recreation." Is that accurate? And so, since it is suggesting a change in language and takes up very clearly open to general public use, I think that there might be some members on the board that would like to hear why that language you wish to be strictly.
Sure. Good evening, for the record, my name is Adam Walters, Tony Phelps, I'm representing the applicant. So I think from our perspective, we've always talked about that space being generally open, and nobody's getting kicked out, should they be using the property or cutting through. But it's a little different to designate something as specifically open public space in a plat that's filed with the county clerk's office, that creates parkland issues. And it's just, from our perspective, it's inconsistent with kind of how we've been looking at that. It's not a public amenity. It is open to the public. Again, INHS has no interest or intention of posting no trespassing signs or anything like that. But really, again, the amenities at the end of the day are for the residents of the property. And specifically under the subdivision law, that is what we are required to do. We are required to provide open space and recreation for the users of the project. And that is exactly what we've done. So it's, from our perspective, it's just, it's a little too much to put a specific demarcation, open to the public, because that creates rights and issues that I just don't know that we're prepared to deal with. We were talking internally, if the villagers really feel strongly about that, perhaps those become public amenities, much like the roads, where you take one of those things, and then obviously it's a public facility and open to all residents. So that's kind of what we do.
So is the concern insurance and liability?
It's a bit insurance.
That would be different than millions of dollars a bag of gift that you would probably have to have for someone to walk on the public sidewalk anyway?
Yeah, so the public sidewalk, remember, is yours.
Right.
Right?
But if I'm walking on the sidewalk and then fall on someone's lawn...
Right, then that's...
That's the homeowner. And if it's the property owner.
Right.
Right.
You also have, these applications are going up through DHCR for affordable housing tax credits. We're not sure how the state would view that, an affordable housing project. So there were just another concern internally, and we did not think that that makes sense.
Ms. Diles?
Yeah. It seems to me the difference between awarding open areas and open to the general public use... I mean, you described open areas as meaning open to general public use. The words in the existing resolution are open to general public use. So because of that, my own view would be that you need to change this, because as Mr. Walters just explained, that language is what is intended.
That board is ready, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but again, I'm gonna say, when you put on a plat, that was reported at the county clerk's office, open for public use, that creates...
Because they won't say, and say, open to general public use.
But open to general public use varies. I do not see a drastic difference, Rick, between open to general public use and open to public...
Well, so what does open area mean?
Open space. So, open space...
Open areas and green spaces and open areas, open...
So open area, from our perspective, always, always has referred to the open space requirements in rural law. You have open space requirements for developments. You have to have a certain amount of open space. It does not mean an open to the public. It just, it never has been our intention. And I will apologize if we have been unclear about that. But I think we have talked about...
Didn't you say it would be open to the public?
We have no intention of telling people they can't come out. But that's different than, again, recording something on the plat that says open for general public use. That's a different thing. That almost creates an implication of a public park. And that's a very different thing, I don't think.
Almost, though it doesn't.
Right?
It doesn't say park.
It doesn't.
It doesn't require you to, let me have my birthday party there.
It doesn't, but if you ask Guy, I am confident he is well aware of the 1915 Pittsburgh's case out of Buffalo, the Porter Square case. It said public square. And according to that's where they established the animation rule that says you can't convert public land without an act of the state legislature. And it's pretty hard. So we just, we're not comfortable with that language. We do not think that it would actually be legal for the board to require us to provide public amenities. That's, there's just, there's a lot there. I think we've worked through a lot of issues, and we don't want to jerk about it, if you know what I mean, but this is an important issue.
So I think, and correct me, anyone if I'm misrepresenting us there is, so that the INHS of today is not the INHS of 1980, and will not be the INHS of 2015, and could be completely different, and could then become much more of a gated community, though public streets are running through it. And so I think, as much as the intention I'm hearing from the applicant is, we don't want to have something taken over and away from this private property, become, assume this public land, if that's not the intention, we are not interested in seeing suddenly a gated community come of this neighborhood.
Right.
So I'm now going to look to our council to say, what language represents both...
Yeah, two things. One is, I think if you, maybe there is a way to say it, but you could take out the word public, or you could take out the word general and maybe get to the same place. And what I think Adam's talking about is what's called the public trust doctrine. And the question comes up most often in the public trust doctrine is, was there a dedication or a de facto dedication? As a practical matter, only the village board of trustees would accept a dedication and make a public trust declaration out of piece of land. How that works is, is once you declare something parkland or place it within the public trust. Generally, it departs parklands and recreation, but the canalways and a few other places have had rulings on this too. Then the municipality itself is not free to alienate that, because it belongs to the public. The municipality is only the overseer of it. So you need an act of the state legislature to abandon a parkland. So for example, if the city of New York, which this has come up a lot, wanted to sell something on Roosevelt Island, famous case there, or license something to tab it on the green, they may or may not trigger the public trust doctrine and need an act of the legislature to do it. I understand what your concern is, but without an act of the village board of trustees, and without, you know, an express declaration, de facto or literal, that this is a public park or public recreation, I understand your concern, but I don't see it happening. But I think there's language that you could adjust this language. And Tom had suggested, what if you took out the general use language and put in a prohibition against excluding, you know, putting up private property signs or something like that? I don't know all that. But he whispered it to me, and I think if you took out the word, if it said to and open to general use, and such areas shall be suitably... If you took out the word public, then you may solve the problem.
I think that's, I think that's a good solution. I was gonna suggest that myself.
So I see applicant head nods, and Joe, do you want to say something?
Joe, definitely. Yeah, I mean, I just don't want somebody down the road to say, to do something on this property and say, this is public, it says it's public. I can do anything I want here.
Right.
And we say, well, no, it's really private property. And so then there's a conflict, and we don't want to have that conflict just memorialized. I just wanted to sort of...
Right. I can't have my birthday party there.
Right, because then it's gonna become his property.
Right. So did we just find some common language? And is that need to be nailed down now, or...
Let's remove it. I think removing public does it, I just want to put it up.
Okay. Wow, well, that's happening. Is everyone on the board reading ahead to... I think I'm now... Hello? Hi. I'm Dorothy, the smaller me. Can you hear me? Ever happen? Okay. Thanks, Tim. So are we reading ahead Village of Truensburg Planning Board? Should it be number two in our brains? Okay. Adam, are you, can I report her?
Yeah.
Stephanie? Do you want to compose the language there?
I was just wondering if you could look up the language.
Great.
How does it read now?
"The final plat shall specifically denote and mark lot 7 and lot 12 green spaces and open areas as available to and open to general use, and such areas shall be suitably graded and kept relatively level as to promote such use and future recreation."
Yeah, that certainly doesn't imply do not enter or something, you know?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So page two, so page 15 rather, condition five. It's lines 26 and 338. So... Okay, so we have in here about the trails and sidewalks. "The pathway on lot 7 shall be lighted its entire length." And there's actually three conditions there. And the applicant requests thus, request... The applicant's request the elimination of this whole set of conditions and the renumbering of the subsequent paragraphs accordingly. And so the conditions that are being asked to be stricken are, "The pathway on lot 7 shall be lighted its entire length by low voltage or low intensity pathway lighting, reading above subdivision conditions to help assure safe travel in low light conditions." "The pathway on lot 7 and all sidewalks and trails shall be maintained in all areas of the project by the applicant, including by the timely removal of snow, ice, and debris." "The pathway on lot 7 shall have a solid tight base and walking surface consisting of flat top, forest pavers, compacted stone with lime dust, other such material, blah blah. And in the reasonable opinion of the zoning officer, will allow for our augment ease of walking, riding, and access by wheelchairs and similarly impaired users." I'm not sure if you want to address them individually. I am concerned, I'm curious, why, why, why no lighting?
Yeah, so I think we've discussed this quite a bit over the time, and I know you've been a passionate...
Apenet?
For lighting. Let it, when you, we can do all three, I think.
However you want to dissect it, I think we have questions about all of them.
Sure. So from our perspective, all of them are significant costs. It really is a similar cost issue. It's always been a cost issue. We have, we have discussed it several points in the process doing more than what was proposed. And each time, we probably have a lengthy discussion about why we didn't think that made sense. I don't think we ever came to any specific resolution, which is why it's here as an open issue today. It's really, it is strictly a cost issue. This is perhaps, I don't want to exaggerate, but this is perhaps one of the most expensive affordable housing projects that these guys have ever worked on. There's a lot of amenities in here, a lot of public infrastructure that they have to pay for, a lot of street trees, which is a great... It's all going to be a really gorgeous, unbelievably well-designed community. But it's very expensive. And this just kicks it up dramatically. After extreme cost overruns in the, what I would call, the soft process, right? We were originally anticipating, you know, six, eight months to get through the process. We're well into year two. It's been a great process. It has been thorough, it's comprehensive, it's had a lot of public input, a lot of back and forth. But at this point, we're just, there has been a careful evaluation on this side. And we feel like if it's anything other than a trail, the trail that's proposed, anything that's more expensive, we just really think it makes sense to withdraw altogether. And let's just make that green passive recreation space.
Okay. And I think that I'd like to look at my board members and say, I'm not concerned about what, if it's wood chips or not. I would argue that some solar lights are not stupid expensive. And do provide just enough of, hey, someone's here. We're aware there's a path here. There's some amount of low light. You can, it does make the creepy shadows different. And it says we're watching, we're aware this is here. I think that that satisfies me, and I would be shocked to hear you say you couldn't put in some path lighting that was solar.
Lighting that was not wired or electric.
No, yeah.
Just literally solar, quote, a silence.
Yeah, because the brighter the LEDs, they're pretty bright these days. And it's enough. But that doesn't speak to the other two conditions, which I know are more important, maybe to some of my board members.
The wood chips is, that would eliminate anybody older or in wheelchair to locomote on that trail. Wood chips.
It would.
So it becomes to be a more universal trail, bikes, walking, elderly, handicapped, all inclusive. No reason for a different surface. One thing from, if it's raised at all, the pavers tend to... I guess the pavers mentioned here.
Yeah.
Yeah, they tend to always open.
They'll collapse in the old sideways.
But maybe there's a better solution.
All of that creates additional imperfect surface that then creates additional storm.
I would argue that there is access, you know, there's handicap access, there's really good access on the sidewalk. So if somebody was...
It needs to be separate.
Yeah, but it's a pretty such work path that not so much as anyone can get in here. I also don't have any home, I mean, sure, you can do that. But...
And I think that John has brought up that it's sort of a natural route. I mean, it's how people will walk, and so whether you improve it or don't improve it, people are going to walk there, and let's make that safe, which is really where the lighting is coming from. So I remember that you, yeah, funds were endless for a second.
Well, I guess I would put forward that mulch is fine, but it's not cost prohibitive to do something like an oil stone. That's comparable to mulch, and is a more firm and solid surface. That is permeable. But as Jessica says, I've had a feeling that this is going to be a major thoroughfare, because the center of gravity is headed in that direction to get down to public transportation, to get to the schools, to get to the downtown Truensburg. And to deny that, or to sort of think that it's not going to be heavily used is missing something.
So again, it's okay if it's heavily used, but we're not going to approve of anything that's, anything more than wood chips, because again, if you use, and you can talk to this, if you use oil stoned up, it creates an impermeable surface, even if it's an impermeable surface.
It's a conservative idea. Yeah.
Oh.
It's a wrong option. Oh, really? Yeah.
Okay.
More grading we do through there, we put harder surfaces in there, that's an impact treatment, the silvers, we have weapons there. The mulch path, which well, kind of like you see down at Silver Park, where you kind of, you're like putting mulch in there. If you go through the nature, often intended, hopefully, it'll be firm. Maybe much like grow off inside as well. I'm just concerned about excavating for lighting, for wiring, trying to get machinery in there, create sort of a hard base. It's really shocking to that area. It's actually good, it's supposed to walk.
And solar lights would...
Solar lights, yeah.
Is, oh, I suppose, yeah. Is there enough for solar illumination there? Enough light?
Yeah.
Without any tree cutting?
I mean, all the solar lights that I'm familiar with eventually get darkened in. But those...
Won't last forever, honey.
How about something larger, like solar...
Yeah, because, and I'm sorry, that was Pejori, I apologize. I shouldn't speak that way. Um... Do you want to have to replace, I know, it's really appropriate, I'm sorry. That, even if you were wireladying, even if there were endless suns, those would have to be maintained. Like things don't...
It's not long.
Last forever. And mulch will not, you know, if you decide to use mulch as played, stated in the plat, you're gonna have to replenish it. But I think that...
A lot less disruption on the mulch we reuse, fabric down, natural grades. Put it on top of that, mounted up.
Yeah.
Kind of it's doing that over, on the road, which is, you know, very well. Cut it from that area.
So we're talking about taking out the second two conditions and leaving in one, and making it clear that solar is feasible, that down the street.
Yeah. Yes, great. Okay.
Do we need to maintain, so that it means that we maintain that?
I think that's a, I don't know, does it have to be specifically say? Because in the plat, there's a mulch path that's presented, so we don't have to say that it has to be maintained as mulch, if that's what it is in the plat, right?
If the site plan says that it's a mulch path, then compliance with the site plan would be maintained as a mulch path.
Okay.
But I mean, you can, you can have a mulch path that's got, you know, hasn't had any maintenance on it for years and still's got a little bit of mulch. You know, like...
I think that we send our codes officer, and it becomes a question of, is this being kept up?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think, right?
I still hold it in my...
Oh, no paths.
They do now. I have a question about if we have this path here. And if just has this path, it's lit, does that infer obligation to clear snow? Okay.
I'm not gonna clear snow. That's part of the extent of this vote.
No, no, I understand that, right?
He wants to see if language that says seasonal, we need to add some language that...
I just want to make it clear, you know, we're talking about these conditions. I don't want to come back later and say, oh, you guys got to clear this. You've established a path, you have an obligation here. I'm trying to make this sort of...
I'm trying to make this sort of.
So a couple of word changes might be required. So we said under number one, the seasonal pathway on lot seven shall be lighted with solar lights. And then I would just suggest in print where feasible, so we're saying that if it's under tree canopy, it's likely makes sense to put it under. But we can figure that out as we go through the process and. And um, well, it's, it's entirely under.
Thanks. I'm done, son. Okay.
Okay.
Um, three, page sixteen, condition C. Uh, line forty-one. Okay, so it's um, I'm not sure if it's easier, I guess I'll read the first name. Uh, landscaping and buffers. All, all final submitted landscaping shall be built and maintained where and as depicted in the project information and related site plan renderings and mappings, and no certificate of occupancy or compliance may be issued for any building or dwelling. Until the landscaping and buffering is installed in substantial compliance with the approved applications and site plans. The applicant um, asked that the opening sentence read, all final sub-submitted landscaping shall be built and maintained by applicant except that any landscaping within the public rights of way shall be maintained by the village where and as depicted in the project information and related site plan renderings and mappings. And no certificate of occupancy or compliance may be issued for any building or dwelling until the landscaping and buffering is installed in substantial compliance with the approved applications and site plans. So that seems pretty straightforward to me. Is there anyone on the, on the board or our engineers council that object to changing to the applicant's language that it crosses? Okay, um.
If it's in the public, by the way, three guys can issue.
It's, it's still a public, anyway, the responsibility. Okay, um, so then, uh, guy, that passes.
One, uh, one issue, I don't know, there, there are a couple of occasions where landscaping, landscape is mentioned in this. Uh, I think there's another one later, but one of the things that I think uh, some wording might be included that says words to the effect that maintenance of the trees, watering is crucial the first year that trees are planted. And, and I don't know how.
So the way we handle that, we're gonna talk about maintenance a little later on from the MRB, but um, all the contracts have warranties for the stuff that's put in and there are contracts for the early maintenance to make sure that it's not, and say, that's correct. So it's built ways in contracts.
And you're still using uh, Probridge and Yon?
Whoa, whoa, yes, whoa.
They designed it, they installed.
Yeah.
Right. But if you know Ryan, hit me up.
Um, okay, so great. So now we're moving on to uh, page eighteen. Condition seven, lines ten through four. Fourteen. Okay, so ten through fourteen, read, uh, once ground is opened or disturbed or construction of any building or improvement is commenced, the applicants and their agents shall diligently pursue and complete such construction as expeditiously as possible. With construction activities to be reasonably scaled to seasonality and primary roadway and multiple dwelling construction to be significantly completed or enclosed within twenty-four months of any final approvals if and as issued. And all erosion and sediment controls as required by the approved final plans and approved final swift and any subsequent swift modifications necessary to maintain water quality standards and or prevent prohibited discharges, including in compliance and accordance with the most current requirements and standards set forth by New York State E C, U S E B A and the general permit shall be maintained and all soils preserves.
Preserve.
Excellent, and kept stabilized. All best construction management practices and EPA, I went to car. Stop me. Okay, so the developer submits that as success with the planning board throughout the review process, the construction of the project will take place in multiple phases with significant grading required for site preparation and swift implementation to occur during the project's first phase. Because certain lots, in example, market rate lots, may not be developed within the first twenty-four months following final approval. Applicants respect early requests that the condition be revised to reflect the multiple-phase n- nature of the development. Thus, developer requests that item one be reformed to read as follows. Once ground is opened or disturbed or construction of any building or improvement is commenced, the applicants and their agents shall diligently pursue and complete such construction as expeditiously as possible. With construction activities to be reasonably scaled to seasonality, primary roadway, long.
To add additional language, that's the original language.
Oh, I'm like, that sounds where we're gonna change.
Yeah, and so, so we suggest just ending at seasonality. It's really the twenty-four month issue. We just, well, let's have an.
So wait, where you, I'm sorry, now I'm.
Construction as expeditiously as possible with construction activities to be reasonably scaled to seasonality.
Oh, and end it there.
Right there. We're just saying twenty-four months, that may or may not happen. That's the reality and we just, we don't wanna create a situation where we've got violation.
Dean?
I, I had an objection to a lot of that, but I can't do anything because the zoning says Saturdays. And the trucks can come in at seven and then they start construction, I guess at eight. But I raised the issue about the length of the days and uh, threaten our. So it would have to be changed in the document to do something about it. I find, you know, two years of that much construction. And then if you have a bad winter, you have an additional.
Right, again, that's why we think that expeditiously, seasonality still makes sense.
So you wanna, but that's just a one. You're not suggesting we strike the reference act to the swift in the.
No, no, just the rest of that, as, and primary roadway, multiple dwelling, twenty-four months.
You guys wanna get another?
No question.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not hung up on, on keeping the twenty-four in there because I think. Right. And again, we recognize in former board meetings that poor market rate will happen when they're sold and.
Said, I do wanna say that I did recommend several times that we use pre-built panels to make the process much, much faster. Which many communities are doing, boom, boom, boom. Two, three guys build it in a couple of days, can be done. So there's other ways, is what I'm saying.
On the record. Okay, so then we uh, approved that change. Um, guy. Okay, so page eighteen, um, condition eight, lines thirty-two through thirty-eight.
We're all set on that one?
We do not.
We, we've added changes, we just wanted to make sure that exactly what you were asking for is part of our design package is closeout meetings.
Okay, take that.
Andy said no problem.
Um, okay, so then, so then MRB, you have some recommendations. Do you wanna speak to those?
For as built, huh?
No, six, seven, she's losing.
Oh, oh, I.
Yeah, six, seven and eight, I was moving on together because I can read, go ahead.
We're fine with six, pre-construction meeting makes perfect sense. No problems there.
Okay, why don't I just read them so that it's not confusing to myself and those in the audience and then you can follow up. So we'll do them one at a time. I'll pause, I'll try to enunciate. MRB recommends consideration of a pre-construction meeting condition prior to construction beginning and prior to any issuance of permits, a pre-construction meeting with village staff, CEO, engineer, zoning officer, planner, developer, contractors and any utility providers is to occur. It to be included, it makes sense to add this to condition number three, page eleven, line twenty-three through there. So.
Sure, so it's typical that when we have projects that it gives an opportunity for a break, sit at table, the other party construction is going. So one, give an introduction to the contractors that'll be working, we get face time with who, we being the village staff, co-enforcement officers, municipality, gets face time with the contractor so they know who the point person is. We kind of regurgitate a lot of these conditions, the, the construction conditions to them. Um, typically there are minutes created at this meeting so that there's dialogue of what transpired. And we get usually a general idea of certain triggers, you know, when inspections are going to occur, how often, what type of threshold of that we're going to look forward. It gives us an opportunity to get to some of the more technical construction stuff and I think it's good practice for.
Yeah, okay, great.
So that, that gets added then to uh, condition, we, we condition on three, page eleven.
Right, which already addresses which is precipitation added, progress in front of other.
So this just specifies that one of the meetings will be pre-construction meeting.
I would lead off with that and then continue, but it would be adding that phrase to that condition.
Okay, yeah, good, okay. Um, uh, item seven on our outline is from MRB recommends a condition uh, for maintenance bond. As part of the dedication process and prior to closing out the LLC, a maintenance bond, ten percent over two years, is that right? Is to be provided, sorry, is to be provided to the village to cover any deficiencies. It to be included, it makes sense we should add this to condition B on page fourteen, line seventy-seven.
So, uh, we have two counts. Um, one is, we would prefer not to do a bond for the maintenance side of things for two reasons. One is all the work that's been done has been a one-year guarantee. So there's an issue in the first year, the contractor has to deal with it. If we have the post of maintenance bond, that's basically, it's like buying an insurance premium, an insurance policy, it was a premium. It's dollars spent, it never getting used on a project, it's never stopped. Uh, we don't think that makes sense. We're, we're fine with a requirement that has real responsibility. We would like to tie it to the one-year guarantee if possible.
Present it.
Yeah, we think that's reasonable. If something doesn't pop up in the first year, it's, it shouldn't be a problem, but of course we would do a one-year closeout if we will. But we're suggesting one year no bond, applicant was responsible and we would, fill that into our contracts. So we would be able to say in contract, you can actually do that.
So what we do it in that, one of the conditions is a letter of credit or surety, so would we just keep that letter of credit, let's say the retained portion of that open for that year in the way of closing that out? So, cause that's really the only guarantee that goes there, is that surety that's there.
Again, our preference would be to close it out because it costs money to build it. Um, and that's money that's just going to a third party that's never getting used in the project. Uh, if it's clear we're responsible, we think that that should do it. Uh, I N H S is a great reputation in all the communities, the work they do and that is it. And we understand in many communities, they do require some funds. We are, we have no objection to the bond for performance to get the public infrastructure in place. We're just saying on the maintenance side, once it's wrapped up, once it's closed out, we would like not to have to buy additional um, insurance policies to cover that immutability. Let's just make it clear that.
Yes, I give it up to the attorney as long as there's a way to put that in some writing format so that once the village takes dedication of the roadway, of the infrastructure, if something's going to happen six months later, that's what the bond would cover. We cover that replacement, that repair.
A year is not a long.
As long as there's a contract written up, however that language is written, guarantees that they'll cover that cost. I'm floundering, but typically I've seen my lawyers make this plan with surety or some stuff or keeping the letter of credit open, it guarantees that.
Um, there are ways to do it. I, I frequently see projects even bigger than this that don't require post-construction maintenance bonds. Um, generally speaking, if you're inspecting the roadway, subbase base and the uh, subsurface and then X number of months later, the surfacing of it, um, you can, and I do have communities that have a separate standalone contract where they have to guarantee the roadway for one year. There's other infrastructure here that, that is gonna fall into this category as well. Stormwater, which they're gonna be stuck with the general permit conditions which are gonna require them to do that regardless of what we say. And then the landscaping is the other thing because if the tree isn't maintained and it dies, one year is generally what the rule is anyway. Um, but, you know, again, it's up to you how, how secure, how comfortable are you. I don't wanna be advocating for or against I N H S. I've worked with that in a lot of other communities. This isn't those other communities, so this board has to decide. Um, you certainly can as part of, um, you can certainly do something instead of a maintenance bond, like a, a written guarantee of performance, maintenance and repair or replacement. Um, the question of course is, is what does that worth? How is it enforceable? What's the cost of that? You can write around all of that, a perfect rule, reasons never come up in the real world, they sometimes do. Um, so it's up to you.
So the difference then between adding some language that, that is, that secures the fact that we can have some recourse, but then you having to take I N H S to court to get the money instead of it already being somewhere to, to now.
Not to be cynical, but when it's a bond, pretty much you end up in court anyway.
Oh, okay.
Because it, it, because the insurance company, it doesn't generally.
Oh, okay.
Right, if it's clear that it hasn't been, if, if it's clear that the infrastructure hasn't been built, it's a performance type, then it, you have to build X according to Y standard by Z date. And it hasn't happened. That's pretty easy to document and improve your entitlement to the bond. How much of the bond do you ensure that company's gonna get you to complete construction? That's something you end up in the dispute. Once it's actually built, and I'm going through this, and I will say where, but in a road use agreement, to speak right now, where municipality's saying, we have X amount of damage to our road under the road use agreement, pay us now. And the contractor is saying, no, we only caused Y amount of damage to your roads, we're not gonna pay you the whole lot. Frankly, the way, the way that, that surety bonds work in the state of New York, if it's heavily disputed, you end up in court anyway. The question is, who are you gonna end up in court against? Um, a lot of municipalities that struggle with this, um, some of them are large enough that they understand that if the applicable goes on surety that they're going to court. Others would rather deal with the direct landlord than they'd deal with the permits and everything else. I can build, you know, bells and whistles in the contract, but at the end it's still a contract. It's not a guarantee pool of money to pay, like a letter of credit might be, um, but you're balancing apples and oranges. I mean, if, if it's gonna cost seventy thousand dollars to provide this surety for two years and you could actually get whatever doesn't work done for ten thousand dollars, you take sixty thousand and put it in.
Or can we quantify what value of money we're talking about here?
Ten percent would be, we don't have estimates yet, but it's a hundred percent of public infrastructure.
So we typically see them ranging somewhere between fifty thousand to ten thousand dollars. I'm the larger.
Why, pick seventy? Cause I think it's probably a realistic guess based on the size of the project and the amount of roads and sidewalk.
So, yeah, we'd be very comfortable with a guarantee. If there's a problem, if there's a problem at any point, on anything, it'll be the parties that will get out and exit. Um, we think that makes sense?
Right.
We just don't wanna have to pay a third party for a premium.
Yeah, I think.
A year, however, is a very short time to have a guarantee on a road. I mean, look, I think I know the road you're talking about. There's one heading west. And it's a washboard and somebody was responsible, um, so it had to be probably respraked and resurfaced. We've had some issues with roadwork. It of course depends what time of year you do it too, but a year is a very short time.
We should be willing to go like as eighteen months on the road, twelve months on everything else? I don't know, I'm just trying to get the idea though.
I mean, um, it's two thousand and fifteen road. And, um, you know, to, I mean, I guess what we were saying in the first place is for that first year, the contractor is responsible. So if there's something wrong with it, you say to us, there's something wrong with it, you go to the contractor and they'll fix it. Um, after that, it's gonna be our responsibility. So that's why a year makes sense to us.
That's throwing the idea out, cause I hear what, what he's saying.
But as you point out, every, every piece of installation, those are very rigorous inspection process. And it's all to the standards MRB created for this project.
And I think, I think what we typically see the issues are, everybody gets dedicated and the roadway's still getting used for construction vehicles because we have a timeframe where the individual owners are in, so curbing or gutting.
Oh, okay, now I get it. I'm like, what do we want, okay, who repairs that?
One year from final top coating.
That's typically what we see, something like that. Cause you could hold off on the top.
Well, that would probably get into the.
You should hold off on the top for a while. That would probably be more.
That's a very good idea.
If you can, we should see a hose on the.
Okay, now I'm understanding, I'm like. Okay, now I'm understanding. I'm like, the village can't have it. It's not their responsibility forever. Okay, so are we all...
Well, I think, I think you guys can put something together that will provide essentially the same protection for the village. So there's little risk and, you know, not a waste of resources, schedule on conditions.
Okay, uh, okay, which is one year from final top coating.
That is for the policy approval portion. It does not have a specific...
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And last one?
MRB recommends an inspection condition for the stormwater permit to notice of termination prior to issuance of the NOT to New York City D E C terminating coverage under the S P E E S permit. A final inspection of the site is to occur with village staff and approval by the village as due provided. If to be included, this would go on page fourteen, condition C.
So typically what happens is they're, as part of this process, they're gonna give them their D E C. They grant them permission to go out there and do the work, and in accordance with their criteria, you can follow that process down. What happens at the end of the project is that once they're done with the construction, they have to fill out and close out that permit because they're paying on it. Here the weld's open. So they might close it up so they're not obligated to do those inspections anymore. They're not obligated to keep that road control in place anymore. Being that we're not an MS four agency, which some municipalities are large enough and have been deemed the appropriate agency to govern over that, D E C still regulates that here, they have to receive that N O T. It doesn't come through our, the village process. It goes from them directly to D E C, and then it gets closed out. What I'm asking for is to give us a little bit of that ability to make sure that we're all in agreement at the time of when that gets terminated.
And we think that makes perfect sense. And we change what we request instead of village staff?
Mr. Coe.
Village engineer.
Okay.
That's nice of them.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little too easy for me to vote because the worst is somewhere in the plan that's actually dedicated to the village or some lower assets. And what we usually do for our clients that are known to maintain these is we walk them through the maintenance procedures that we have in the suite. So I would suggest that we, village staff, and you, so that we can walk them through.
Plus, it's good to have that final punch list with the CEO or just in case anything happens.
If Andy says it.
Has anybody run through the potential possibility of water there with climate change? And, you know, we have like a ten, fifteen percent increase in rainwater in addition to the site being quite water compromised.
Yeah, we've had those discussions.
Because the last few rains, even though they've been on the rare side lately, have been the intensity, the immediacy of it coming down, astonishing.
So the systems are designed for the hundred-year storm, right?
But this is a hundred-year.
But what you're seeing and what you're suggesting is that a hundred-year storms have to be more frequent.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly, but that's why it works. Because as long as it doesn't happen all on one day, and we get a thousand-year storm, in which case we're all underwater anyway, as long as it has time to drain, and that's the whole point of the stormwater system, to slowly let the water go so it doesn't overwhelm the downstream areas, then you can have a hundred-storm, a hundred-year storm every week and be fine. The system is designed to work perfectly fine. And we had, we did have that discussion, and they did somewhat in depth about twelve months ago.
Yeah, and it's just the amount of rain coming is a little, more than a lot.
As I think I said, if we get a thousand-year storm, we're all underwater and we need books. But if we get a lot of hundred-year storms, this system will pull that point one.
Victoria, the Corrill Regional Plant Center has updated the rainfall intensity curves and the data that we used over the last three or five years for all of our practices, recognizing the changes. Because the original data was twenty years old plus. So we're trying to keep up with the times. We're designing archer system and the whole more...
Yeah, I went to that excellent lecture they gave on the lake. It was excellent. And I've also had advice on our polluted ponds from them. They're a pretty, very respectable group. I like them very much.
Just for the purpose of the board as well, I mean, as part of this process, in the very beginning, they sized this facility to meet what was the original design. And since, reduced in some areas the imperative service while maintaining that original size of the facility. So it has been oversized to accommodate some of that potential, something maybe a little bit greater than a hundred-year storm or flash floods we see occurring. It's not gonna handle, there isn't anything that's been designed to handle a five-hundred-year storm event. They're not obligated. They're meaning the highest level standards is there. But they have oversized the facility. How many pieces to that are designed to handle a storm event of that size?
Are there other, before we open up to other comments that the board might have or the applicant might have that didn't get addressed in the document that I read? Are there other comments from engineer that have come up since Mrs. Piles?
Not as it relates to that document or the preliminary plans before.
Okay. Are there other issues you wanted to take with the resolution?
Nothing further than that.
Okay. Board, are there other thoughts that you wanted to address about the discussion of this application?
What did you want me to clarify a bit?
I think you bring it up here and... You did with the duration of the construction.
Yeah, that was a big concern of mine and, well, you know, I have been, I understand it from a slightly different perspective. I feel that I don't know that we have listened sufficiently to, I know we've gone through and there's some very good answers here today and some much better ideas. But I think in all in all, one of the largest things that has been brought up over and over and over again is the size of this project. And that came up when it first started, and then it got bigger because then you got the school and the road and the building. So that's the one thing where I felt as a, you know, I kind of brought it up a few times, but there isn't a whole lot I feel that this part could do. And the reason I'm hobbling along with some other issues and points is that just, is to see that some of the things happening there are environmentally maybe a little more considerate and friendly and more serious because I do think the climate crisis has advanced whether it's there, I mean, it's here.
Does anyone else on the board have any other points that they'd like to discuss? Yes.
The changing of discussion item number seven about the maintenance bond into something different needs actual language if you're going to consider it. So I've written something about one, and I have an idea where it would, I'll just read it so you can all hear it. "A written agreement for a one-year maintenance guarantee by applicants on all public infrastructure where roadways to be measured from the date of final top coating shall be signed and approved by applicants in the building as a condition to final site plan or final subdivision plan approval." I would recommend that that be a standalone condition ten and existing numbers eleven and ten will allow me to become eleven. That makes sense.
That does make sense. Okay, good.
I just have one very minor one, solar. We discussed solar a few meetings ago, but I have, I've heard and think further about it.
Our plan at the moment is to, we're leaving the purchasing off-site community solar so that we can get to net zero for the kind of abandoned buildings.
For your own solar, oh, no roofs facing south because you got two big roofs.
And they're all going to, excuse me, all the INHS buildings will be solar-ready so that they could accommodate panels in the future.
But they didn't, she's saying not...
There's no plan, no specific plan for solar on those roofs.
Right.
They're leaning, saying there's a plan to purchase from a solar...
No, from the farms nearby.
Yeah, exactly. That is the current plan, although green, we've talked about it a hundred times. Green is a critical part of INHS's admission, so we'll continue to strive for green. And as solar becomes more readily available, which is doing better every day, and SolarCity, I believe, just announced the, like, the roof tiles we talked about in the past.
Who's putting it?
Yeah, that's a fascinating, yeah.
Yeah, so there's good stuff happening. It will continue to evolve. And that will continue to be part of the effort.
Okay. I think that it's, you know, it's time for us to make for the preliminary determination. Yeah?
Would you just define, time-wise, what this preliminary means right now in terms of time, let's say? So...
Oh, got it right. It was a hundred and eighty days from preliminary determination applicant has to affect any conditions that have been approved as part of a preliminary determination and submit them. It doesn't mean they, I mean, they could submit tomorrow any conditions. And then I don't know when we've, I can't remember when we have to vote, final after the submission.
Yeah, I have that idea. I will call it. A preliminary approval on a site plan and a preliminary approval on a subdivision have slightly different timelines and rules depending upon whether the infrastructure's going to be bonded or built. But in this scenario, though, roughly brought up parallel timelines. And within a set period of time, I think it is a hundred and eighty days of memory service. The applicants will be required to return before this board with a final site plan and/or final subdivision plan that will also be reviewed. It will be reviewed to make sure that it is in substantial compliance with the preliminary approval as issued, that what's been built or designed to date is in compliance, and that if there are any changes, they need to be measured. And if they're substantial, then you trigger additional review, additional public hearings, and things like that. So it's, unless there's some substantial change, let's say they get in, they start doing real geotechnical work and ground boring and find out, oops, this building can't be in that location, we need to move it. They're gonna come back. But as long as everything's in substantial compliance with the mapping, the site planning, the subdivision planning, the layout, and the conditions, and approvals, and all of the big, thick packet has all been referenced as part of what's approved, which includes all the landscaping, all the tree plantings, et cetera. As long as they're in substantial compliance, you review it, you make any vital adjustments, changes, approve any minor things that come up. For example, you have a written agreement, you have a stormwater maintenance agreement. Those things would be prepared, they have to be negotiated, approved, and finalized and accepted by this board. And since their contracts and the board trustees would need building on as well. So there are things to do, but the concept of planning and planning review under both town law and village law is that the final plans should match in substantial form the preliminary plans. It's recognized that there are going to be changes, but what you're approving now basically is the template upon which they will attempt to move forward.
Okay, which does mean if somebody finds an endangered species that has not yet been identified between now and a final vote, that is a significant change that stops and triggers another review or things like that?
More likely it would trigger contact with the D E C and the determination of whether or not a part of what you did take early.
Right, okay, but there's, I mean, okay.
There would be things that would trigger more review, yes.
Okay. So then we should move forward with a vote, which the procedural thing is the part that makes me this nervous. So I have to make sure I say the right words. And so is there a motion to approve this preliminary application? This preliminary cloud application with recognized conditions and language as noted here today?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Can we do a show of hands and say aye? Oh, we'll call. All in favor, here, okay.
Aye. Rick?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Victoria?
I abstain.
And Mr. Ober?
Aye.
So it passes. Okay, Rob. Oh, is there a motion to adjourn? That's it?
Aye.
Aye.
Second? Did it actually motion to adjourn?
No, they didn't.
I mean, we have, we can talk about old business and new business. It's only... Does that actually happen? I did, but I didn't read it all the way through. Can we, did everyone get, planning board, did everyone get? Yeah, did everyone get a chance to read Tom's email? Yeah, so, okay, let's be prepared for that. We could also, I confess I didn't all read to the very end, but so we can comment back on that before our next meeting. To, please, yeah, and we can do the, your email conversation that is legal. Yeah, okay. Okay. Oh. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn? A second, okay, all in favor, all great, thanks. Meeting adjourned.